So, no, this is the agenda, but I usually.
Good evening and thank you for joining us for tonight's public hearing on the Waterville Central School District's Districts wide safety plan. This is an annual requirement and we appreciate your participation and interest in the safety and well being of our students and staff. The district wide safety plan is a general emergency response plan that outlines the district procedures for preventing, responding to and minimizing the effects of serious incidents. This draft plan has been posted on the district's website and is available for public view. In accordance with New York State Education Department Commissioners Regulation 155.17 E3, we are providing an opportunity for public comment prior to the plan's formal adoption. The draft was posted to our website on June 20th and a parent square notification was also pushed out. Tonight's hearing allows for input from school personnel, parents, students and any other interested community members. In addition to this hearing, residents are welcome to email me at Z A B B E at Waterville CSD.org with questions or comments through August 12th when the Board of Education is scheduled to adopt this plan. The purpose of this plan is to prevent or reduce the impact of serious violent incidents and to support effective coordination with local and county emergency response agencies. In addition to this district wide plan, each building principal is responsible for developing a confidential building level emergency response plan, which will be shared with local law enforcement. Looking ahead to the 2025-26 school year, I'd like to highlight new requirements recently adopted by the Board of Regents. These changes mandate that all New York State districts use standardized emergency response terminology and definitions in their procedures and trainings. These terms include evacuate, which is moving students from a school building to a predetermined safe location, shelter, shelter in place, keep students in the building when it is safer to stay inside, lockdown, clearing hallways, securing rooms and remaining hidden and silent in response to an immediate threat of violence. Lockdowns end only when law enforcement physically releases those inside. Hold or hold in place, restricting movement within the building during a short term emergency and then secure lockout, locking and securing the building when a threat exists outside of school. These terms will now be required in staff training, student drills, emergency procedures and related policies. To support this transition, the district has ordered updated emergency response cards. They will be posted in each classroom to reinforce this terminology and those actually arrived already. So we have those in place. Tom Gleason received these just the other day. Really the the big change in the language comes from the secure lockout. And that really comes down to the fact that for many years, there's been a lot of confusion between lockdown and lockout. They sound too similar, but they're drastically different emergency protocols. So adding that secure lockout has been determined to help alleviate some of that confusion with the two. So we have both the cards that will be posted in classrooms and then they also sent these staff cards as well. So these on the back have some additional information for staff to fill in, which is a good idea for for two reasons. One, because in an emergency situation, sometimes you forget things, the most basic things. So when you have that information right there to be able to respond to and see, that's great. And in addition to that, it makes it helpful when we have people in different room locations. So that would stay put in the room so that they know the appropriate information in the room that they're located in. Not to mention we have substitutes in the building so that they have access to all of that information if need be. I'd also like to take a moment to recognize the members of our district safety committee who are included on tonight's board of education agenda for approval. As a reminder, we are seeking three board members to serve on this committee as part of our continued focus on safety and emergency preparedness. At this time, I'm happy to take any questions. And again, if questions arise after tonight's hearing, you may email me at Z A B B E at Waterville CSD.org anytime before the plan's scheduled approval on August 12th. Thank you for your time and your commitment to the safety of the Waterville School community. Are there any questions at this time? Wouldn't expect that.
As like with the changes from the break, do we still have the ability to question emails set up?
Yes.
Yeah, because we need a lot of places that aren't changing. And it has been adjusted for for changes.
Okay, then that concludes the public hearing for our district safety plan.
Hi Patty.
Good evening. I will not complain if it gets cold in here tonight.
I will not complain if it gets cold in here tonight.
I'm going to probably speaking to order. Everyone will stand for the letter of the law.
The United States of America and to the Republic of British Sands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Before we start, could we have a moment of silence for MPS teacher Morale Allen? All's in all at the podium with a microphone? We have two new board members tonight that need to be sworn in, Dan Nichols and Lori Swivo. Can you please both come up? Dan, please raise your right hand and repeat after me.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
You know, faithfully discharge the duties of.
A member of the Board of Education of the Waterville Central School District.
A member of the Board of Education of the Waterville Central School District.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
There.
I, Lori Swivo, I, Lori Swivo, do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New York. And that I will faithfully discharge. A member of the Board of Education. Of the Waterville Central School District. According to the best of my ability. I'm trying to say have some very important things. I, Zachary, I, Zachary. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New York. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties. According to the best of my ability.
I, Sophia Amrosa. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New York. And that I will faithfully discharge. The duties of. School business director. Of the Waterville Central School District. According to the best. Now, may I have a nomination for president of the board? Are there any of the board presidents? Are there any other nominated board presidents? Can I get most, that's the advanced, maybe the, the president of the Waterville Central School Board? Congratulations. Are you Steve Stanton?
I, Steve Stanton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York. And that I will faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties of president.
The duties of president.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Waterville Central School District.
Of the Waterville Central.
According to the best of my ability.
Yeah, you can move. Free. Grabbing the water of the desk. He looks so happy. Now we're on to nominations for vice president. We have any other nomination? Last, any other nomination? Those in favor of Tim Jones for vice president?
Aye.
Both.
I'm accustomed to it.
I, Tim Jones. Do solemnly swear.
Which almost were.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New York. And that I will faithfully discharge. The duties of. Vice President of the Board of Education.
Vice President of the Board of Education.
Of the Waterville Central. According to the best.
It's warmer over here. All right, well, we're getting resettled. We can move into appointments. We do have a consent agenda here. Can I get a motion for five, seven approval of the consent agenda for appointments? Thanks, Ken. You got a second? Thanks, Dan. Discussion? I do think we, we have a little discussion on five, one. Do we have any board member? That was interested in being a voting delegate? I know we had some emails going back and forth on our agenda review. And Zach was looking into responsibilities for that.
Which the only responsibility I found was to actually be the person to be at the meeting and vote.
Yep.
So I.
Do we have?
Expected there to be more, but that's all I found.
Do we have like meeting dates? If we don't?
These are one over the, over the coasties? Or these are ones that are Buffalo, you know?
This is the one that would be elsewhere.
It's travel, yeah. I've never done it for that reason. It's, it's usually in the fall. It's usually October.
Yeah.
Yeah.
January fourteenth to the seventeenth.
Is that M L, M L K?
Me too, maybe. No, wait, that's the wrong one.
Do we have some time on that one?
We do, we can pull it if we need to. Yeah.
Did anyone do it last year?
Same with five, three, I don't remember. Dan, do you remember if we had someone go last year or not?
I couldn't find an appointment.
Thanks, Kate. Yeah. That's right.
Is this the one that's in October?
January fourteenth to seventeenth.
We can, we can modify the motion in a minute and pull it.
October twenty-third to the twenty-fifth, that's the one.
That sounds right. October twenty-third to twenty-fifth. So if we need to check calendars, we can add that to August's agenda. Same with five, two. The alternate. So that one's kind of an easy one, as long as we're sure on the voting one, unless they get sick or something, you don't have to do anything. And then five, three. Appointment of representative for Oneida Madison, Herkimer County's SBI. I don't think we sent anyone to this either, did we? Last year. Okay, so we'll table that. Any other discussion on five, four through five, six? Okay, so can we, we'll, we'll table five, one, five, two, five, three for the August meeting. Jen, and then can I just, we'll make the motion again. Can I get a motion for consent agenda on five, four through five, six?
So.
Thanks, Ken. Thank you, Justin. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion is carried. Six, one. Can I get a motion on approval of committee on special education? Thank you, Justin. Thank you, Kate. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Uh, seven, one. And get a motion on approval of designations? Who was that? Dan? Thanks, Dan. Thanks, Kate. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Right. Moving on to authorizations. We have a consent agenda here. Items eight, one through eight, eleven. Can I get a motion? Thank you, Justin. Thank you, Ken. Discussion? Again, I know we had a couple of questions here. If we wanted to have open discussion on that, we certainly could.
Did we get all the answers we were talking about for the building use? I know you were looking into that and stuff.
He, he sent responses, I think. I don't know what.
I did read all that.
I didn't. I know I had some questions. I didn't have any outstanding questions. I appreciated the explanation. Appreciate the explanation on sports boosters and band boosters being class one.
Level, yep.
And why that was spelled out the way it was, made sense. Do we have any other questions on? Past practice even, Lori, I know you had.
Yes, I just asked about, um, if we did charge and then proof of insurance, because I know that's a huge issue.
Proof of insurance, yes, that's requirement. As far as charging. It says in the policy, the class two can be charged for those services and the board has the ability to waive it. My understanding is that we haven't charged very often. When that is the case, but there are rare circumstances where that we have. Some examples are like when we're when we're hosting like a tournament. Uh, out on the sports field and obviously we have to have people here.
Right.
To run those facilities, but. As far as the smaller items where people are just using a space within the building, I don't think we have been charging, even though it says that we can.
Right, and I'm not advocating that we do charge. I I just think if it's too costly, then if custodial and things like that, then we should look into that. But if it's, and we want to help the community too, so.
Yeah, I thought I thought it was a great point, and I think this is a great example. We should add this and Cynthia, this probably falls on you. This should be part of our budget review process. So if we're not collecting the data. On, hey, what, how much custodial, for example, cleanup is involved in the concession stand? Right, or maintenance after a big event? Is there plumbing? We should be collecting that and then we could build that into. Is this really within our budgetary expense? Are we exceeding planned expense and make the decision? Do we want to plan for the expense or do we want to say, hey? If events are going to be estimated above X amount of usage, we're going to require. Some sort of fee. I think that would be fair.
That we have the ability to look at that based on the distinctions of whether.
Right.
It's a large event that's coming from outside the district for use, so.
Exactly.
We could track those easy because we have, I'm not. So you have to go through there and that's where you submit your paperwork and everything, so, yes.
And again, I think this dovetails into previous board discussion, even on like raising funds, concession stand use, like the district would then. Perhaps have a justification for. Using the concession stand at certain events to offset the cost. You know, all those things need to be in play, whether we do or we don't is part of the review. When we look at finances, so. And anything else particular on any of these items, but particularly that one? I would say, does any board member need a copy of Robert's Rules of Order? That would probably be a good topic for us to put on a board retreat.
I mean, I could, I guess.
Yeah, because you should be able to get one as a new board member or at any time. That's just a good repressure.
So only Kate? I believe, Lori too.
Yeah, for sure. Okay. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion is carried. Moving to official undertakings, section nine, two items, and we do have a consent agenda. I get a motion for approval of consent agenda for official undertakings, nine, three. All right, Tim and then Dan, thank you. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion is carried. All right, into one of our favorite reorg topics, committee assignments. And you saw, I I I kind of prodded. The email there. So here we go, we've got the committee list. I don't know, can we, do we need to put it on screen or does everybody have it up on your laptop? So now. I was going to go back and I ran out of time. I know we haven't always had three on every committee. And that's what I was interested in. I don't, do we have that info? For tonight, somebody?
As far as who's been on?
Right, how many did we have on?
From what I looked up, it looked like they were on two to three.
It's, yeah, it it's, it'd be rare to have one. Right, you definitely want two for obvious reasons. Three, I think is fine, but again, then we get into too many folks. Spread to them.
Was. Were we taking off this?
Yeah, this isn't to date from last year.
Oh, yeah.
It's patchwork. So, yeah, we need to get get it right. So we can go through, if it's, if it's easy, we can just go top down.
Yes.
On the audit committee. So we have Tim listed, any other interest in the audit committee? Do you want to stay or? And Lori, don't, don't hesitate to speak up. We don't treat you as new, you're allowed to get on anything. You want to get on the audit one?
No, no, I said audit is not one of.
So you want to get on it. I know, I didn't mishear you. You don't shy away from new things here. Quarterly.
We need to, uh, yeah, it's supposed to be once a quarter. Yes, one of the things I think we ought to take note of, we being. Was, you know. Having having a budget committee, not not having. I'm not, I'm kind of. I'm not going to say that I've come totally mad on it, but I think that if we're interested in doing a budget type of thing, it makes sense to do an audit finance committee. And then we just sort of rolled, starting in January, the audit committee starts, starts working on the budget. And that way. Because one of my fears is we give into too many committees.
Correct.
Hard for all of us to get there instead. And, you know, and we get down the week sometimes on plans I think. But I think that if we, if we want to do that, I think that'd be a good solution to having a budget committee as well.
Yeah, that's a. That's a great proposal, yeah, what's everybody saying?
Think that's a very common, yeah.
The this.
Combination.
The thing to keep in mind too is the unique. Role of the audit committee quarterly versus if we start using it as an almost monthly mechanism. In the budget committee, how would we make that work? I'm not saying we can't, but you would need to still have like a quarterly audit committee.
Yeah, I don't think that it really, well, that's one of the things we probably need if we if we want to go this route. Kind of, kind of figure out. I see the finance committing part of it kind of starting in January.
Yeah, yeah.
And we want to start the budget process. Because I think we have to meet. We have to, we have to meet the fall in order to accept. And we accept the audit, correct? And then I think we have to have a meeting in the spring.
To do the, the, um, reserves.
Okay, so I think we're required to have two meetings.
Mm hmm.
So I think we go, and the audit actually tells, can. Inform us on the budget by then. Because you see where we spend the money, where we didn't spend the money in the previous year, so.
Agreed.
I think there's value to the same people taking a close look at the audit and then taking a close look at the budget.
Yeah, and and. I was on the budget committee. I've been on the audit committee. And I do think it would work well. I also think. We can flesh this out, you know, in a retreat or a future meeting. We still have that great discussion around. How do we build out a twelve month? Budget cycle? Like that should still be happening in our board meetings, according to whatever schedule we agree on. And then it's supplemented by. As a board, we give direction to the audit finance committee when they go into budget season. Hey, we want to really get into these things. Here's kind of the general. You know. Thoughts of the board around priorities, but go do the detailed work and then report back at the next board meeting on, hey, this is what we did. And we could really, I think, improve upon. Our historical. Reporting. You know. Mechanism slash like format, so that it's. Something like a Google Doc, you could even review yourself after the budget committee meeting. It's just there, it's living, breathing, like this is what was reviewed, this is where we are right now. Highlighting things, you know, I think we could get better at that too, so.
Great, we try to. To talk about how we have like a standing item. So it's a constant discussion topic.
Yes.
Budget beginning in.
Right, like this would probably be the only meeting you wouldn't. Do it necessarily.
But just some piece of that, so.
Right. So knowing that if we want to work on, and we don't have to solve that tonight, but audit finance. Dan, Tim, still want to be on it?
Um, yeah, I'll stand.
Okay, anybody else want to be the third on that?
I wouldn't mind, you don't need to. Uh, fall. The March is very tough and that's the most important time.
Yeah, and the the big months are going to be December, January, February, March.
Upstate.
Yeah, but. And you'll still, everyone will still be part of the process.
Say, yeah, I think. It's not coming out a week, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, it's, you know.
Right.
I think I could, I'd be involved.
Do we want to go through like all of them first, though? As opposed like the idea of getting spread to then, like if we try to force three? And all of these, like, so we want to see like where everything else falls and then see if we want to add a third?
Yeah. S B I, we said we're coming back to. Policy. Dan, Justin.
I'd like to say.
Okay. We can have two on that. In my opinion. Again, we can discuss that. I've been on that before, I don't know that you need three.
So you're, you're already. I'm also.
I will come off.
I'd recommend that if you're going to be audit and finance.
Yeah.
Because there's a lot of free work for both of those.
I also want people to allow for us to. Keep our, be wise for us to have our volume policy, I think.
Yeah.
I think. People have tried to work our experience, so.
I'd be happy to be on policy.
That'd be great. I'll be for a lot of reasons, so Lori, Kate and Justin then? On policy?
That's, that's, you aren't. Solid.
Uh, negotiations. We know we we used a different process this year.
You can really.
Do, we can just leave that blank. We don't have to designate any board member on there right now. We can cross that bridge down the road.
Do we even have any contracts which are currently?
I see how you come.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we've got some time on that.
Yeah.
If you, and if you want to, some. If somebody. Be part of that.
Okay, uh, capital project.
I would just like, I would like to stay on that.
Okay. Sure. Dan, you want to stay on that one?
Sure.
Yeah, that one's a big one this year because we've got a lot for doing on that this year.
I'd be happy to go on as a third, just to be sure that we have.
That would be great.
That is.
I've done that. That's, that's, they're all important, but that's a big one. I've been on that one too.
We lost the round, I was in summer, first phase, or is that you?
No, I think. Yeah.
I just knew.
Yeah.
It was broken up.
Yeah.
And the space, I wasn't sure if it was twenty, twenty five, twenty six, or maybe it was sixty one, seven, I thought it was.
All right, so we're doing well, consultation on Ed.
What, what does that, what is that?
That's unique. Have you received a copy of the W T A contract yet? It's, it's a collectively bargained committee that's been in the district forever. Uh, it gives the W T A the ability to meet. Directly with board members, designated board members. And we have included the superintendent the last couple of years. There's historical precedent for not including, but we believe including the superintendent is important. For a lot of reasons, uh, but it, we've. Improved our board, uh, W T A relations significantly the last couple of years with more regular meetings. Uh, so it's, it's really a. Either party can bring issues, but really we choose to allow the W T A to bring things to us. And we have dialogue, we just ask that we, you know, get an agenda in advance so we can. Be prepared for discussion and have meaningful discussion, but.
Like to stay on that one.
I can stay on that one, I've been on that for a while, but it'd be good to add a third person if there's interest. It's maximum of once a month and it's at the W T A's sort of preference to schedule them with us.
I think last year we met like every other month.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'd be interested.
Okay, we can add you in there. It's a good one. And again, that'll be good to get to know some of the leadership of the W T A. Wellness. I was on this one, I don't even think I made a meeting in last year. It was always a conflict for me.
So it's seventeen, so, yeah, well. I, did she, are they pre-scheduled already for you? No, okay.
No, they can be changed.
They were at, those ones were at seventeen, I guess.
Yeah, that probably worked for some people, but I can't imagine that works for everyone.
Yeah, it's not the best for me right now.
Yeah, I know. I was going to go back to work, but maybe I'll do this all the time.
If we can dial in remotely, I could probably do it now that I don't have a kid in M B S, I just thought about it. That was one of my barriers. So I I can stay on that one and actually make meetings.
I I would really like to be on that.
Okay, we would love to have you on that. Dan, do you want to stay on that one? You got your name on a lot.
Not at seven A M, I mean, you could stay on it, it makes no difference, I can or can't, but if it's at seven A M, then I don't.
I don't think we need to do it at seven A M.
We can.
We can move them to a different.
We can put you on it, Dan, because you got a lot if you want to come off it. Yeah, it's okay, we can put you on. Work through that. And then safety, we've got Tim, Dan and Ken listed. Good with that? Okay. So going back to the audit finance, just to make sure. Are we good with Tim, Dan and then Ken? Okay. Great. That was way easier than it has been fast. Any questions? All right. Move right into. Eleven, uh, agenda. Minutes approval. It doesn't actually say consent here, so we got to go. One by one. I'm just reviewing.
Eleven, four, it's us.
Yeah, it's. Yeah. Yeah. Can I get a motion for eleven, four? Approval of minutes and agenda for the June tenth and June seventeenth meetings? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, we'll move to business operations. Twelve, six, and I get approval of a consent agenda. Including the the general fund warrant in the amount of six hundred and twenty four thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars and forty two cents. School lunch warrant in the amount of nine thousand, one hundred and eighty six dollars and twenty nine cents. Capital fund warrant in the amount of three twenty, three hundred and twenty nine thousand, three hundred and four dollars and twenty cents. The C S E C P S E recommendations as listed. Can I get a motion?
Still move second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion is carried. Now we're going to move into fourteen, one. Turn it over to our newly sworn in superintendent.
Thank you. So day five on the job, it's been a really busy five days, honestly, just, but everybody's been extremely gracious and extremely helpful. I've had a ton of questions and people have really gone out of their way to do the best to kind of get me as much information as possible. So that's really what about a lot of it has been, is really diving into how Warble has been doing things over the last ten years and trying to get some historical data. And trying to. Figure out the things that I don't know and the things that I need to know. It's been really nice to see, you know, in both buildings, we've already got students back in the buildings. Up here at the high school, driver's ed is up and running. Credit recovery is also going on, there's about twenty five students currently taking place in that. Um, they're supposed to be finished by the end of July with those online courses. Hopefully. Hopefully, the majority of those students will be able to earn those credits and and continue moving forward, you know, in their coursework. Uh, great outdoors up and running, led by Katie Hanson down at the elementary school. Was able to go and see all the kids arrive there the other day. That was, you know, from me being a secondary person, that's really out of my element, but really fun to see. Um, but I know she's been putting in a ton of work to be up and ready for that. Numbers, I think, are are really high and I know that she keeps getting requests for more and more people to join. I think you have about hundred and twenty ish, give or take, that you have registered at. I think you have about hundred and twenty-ish, give or take, that you have registered at this point in time.
Today I took ninety-three to the library and she was amazing. Jill Kirman was like, bring everybody in, so I can't ask for anything better. And we do think that since this week is the Fourth of July, we have about twenty to twenty-five that are gonna come next week that took the whole week off. Like Mr. Bordell is on vacation. His daughter will join us on Monday, so you know, we're gonna have a big influx, but I think we're ready and I have a lot of really fun people working.
FS Engineering was in district today in preparation for the capital project, walking around with Tom Gleason, doing a bunch of that preparatory work. We have second round interviews coming up tomorrow for MPS principal. So we're really looking forward to that and hopefully we can get to a candidate and get that board approved so that we can, as a unit, later on in the summer, really start working towards our goals and that. So that's a, that's a key piece to us moving forward here in this district with me being new and obviously secondary principals coming in last year, like that way we can all start getting on the same page and start making those plans to start moving everything in the right direction. And then another thing that had come up recently was the switch over from CAP region and their public relations service over to OHM. And Cynthia and I are hoping to sit down Thursday morning. Confirmed, so we'll be sitting down with them Thursday morning and that will really be helpful cuz right now a little bit in the dark on that as far as what that's gonna entail and how we communicate with them and so hopefully we'll have a lot more answers for you after that meeting on Thursday. But like I said, it's been, it's been a very, very busy five days, but you know, everybody here has really made that manageable for me and I'm really looking forward to keep moving forward and I know it's really early, but I'm really excited for the school year to start, honestly. That's gonna, the summer's gonna go fast.
Any questions, comments, thoughts? I would just appreciate, uh, Zach for replying to emails on July fourth and July fifth, which was not necessary, but was duly noted. It was.
Yeah, that was a, I had to, because if I didn't do it then, it was gonna be on my mind the entire time. So it was just better to do it and get it done, so that way, that way I could do some.
Some board members may or may not send emails when they're drinking their morning coffee, even on holidays. Okay, did we have, I know Cynthia, you didn't have anything this month. Next month you will.
We will. Yeah, I discussed it with Zach and, uh, we're gonna work on it together after I do some preliminary stuff. That'll be the first part of what we present. So where we think we can make some changes or at least just to present to you what you, what you have that you have information for, so you understand how it goes.
Perfect, okay. Anything from the capital project committee? Just listen on here. I don't think we do.
Uh, and we haven't had a meeting since the last time. Um, I think we have one that's either the end of July, early August. They told us they were gonna schedule our next.
So we're into board discussion before we go to our first public comment. Any items we would like to discuss now? Do we need to pull up the calendar? I would say we need to think about a board retreat. Sooner rather than later. How do we, how do we feel about August? Twelfth and twenty-six, right? So we always have options, um. The twenty-sixth may or may not have a lot of information. Think, I don't, you know, we don't need to put administration on the spot right now, but I would think the twelfth. You'll have your reports, Cynthia, right, for the twelfth. That'll be the more meaty one, hopefully, in MPS, principal appointment, et cetera. So we could carve out time on the twenty-sixth. Could thread the needle there and have a board meeting and then go into a retreat. I know everyone wants to give up their summer weekends. No. No, thank you. Any other thoughts right now? Do we wanna block out another day? Are there any of these weeks that are a no-go, absolute no-go for anybody? Like the week of the eighteenth, is anybody out of town? Are there any nights that work better? For our superintendent?
I think, no. I should be going in the week.
You wanna pick a night that week? For a board retreat? Weekend. That works for me. No, I mean Tuesdays work for me. Me, my football player will have practice. He doesn't need me for anything. You can walk over here. So what time? And how long? Five thirty? We don't wanna go earlier than that, do we? Five thirty? And do we wanna just plan till eight? Have some food here like we've done before? Yeah, I think so. So we'll just say five thirty to eight. We can plan out the details. We don't have to hash them all out tonight. I would say I'd like everyone's thoughts, but within a couple of weeks, we should have topics pulled together that we wanna discuss. So again, we can start, we can start an email thread. I'll send one out like tonight on that with all of us and Zach and just if everybody's active on that, we can hash out what we wanna go over. Framework, get a little food to eat while we do it. Anything else we need to discuss about the retreat?
Is it here?
Yeah, we'll do it here. We don't like to spend money as a board.
No, I don't.
We've been saving money the last few years as a board on that line item, so we're gonna keep that trend. Now, we could, we've, in the past, we've done them at BOCs, that's possible for sure, but I don't think we need to with this one. If we were gonna do like a workshop or something, I would say maybe, but just us. Unless we decide to try to bring somebody in.
Okay, the topics are.
Yeah, let's see. I think a lot of that'll be in partnership with you and where you're at and. Yeah, that Tuesday, the nineteenth, five thirty to eight, we will want some food if you can help coordinate that. So, yeah. Okay. Any other board discussion right now? I would say two things. Welcome Lori, and we've done that before. Excited to have you here. And I would like to thank and recognize, uh, Justin and Dan for being officers. A special thank you to Dan for doing two years in a row with Board Pres, including, uh, spearheading our superintendent search. Uh, it's a lot of work and Dan did a great job and now gets to be more of the peanut gallery participant in meetings. So, appreciate it. Okay, public comment. A public of one. I checked, there's no questions in the BOE email either, so we are good to go. Old Business seventeen one, uh, approval of a policy for second reading. This is attendance. So, do we wanna motion here or do we wanna table this? I guess, I guess we'll make a motion first and we'll discuss it. Can I get a motion? For seventeen one? Thanks, Tim. Thanks, Dan. Discussion. So we had some questions on this in email, right? Are, are we good to approve the second reading because the next time it comes on the agenda, we're gonna be approving policy? Or do we need to table this?
So I don't know what the past conversations have been with building administrators. It's something that I have not had a chance to talk to them about and would like to, so I guess if they've. Yeah, that would be helpful.
So I believe what happened was, uh, it was reviewed in policy committee. It was brought for first reading and then it was not followed up on. And Dr. Spring realized this before she left and had Jen put it onto the agenda for second reading. So that's how it got on today's agenda.
So I would say. Yeah, the, the, the thing we're gonna have. The thing we'll have to keep in mind is it has to come back on the next meeting due to Robert's rules and then we have to push it ahead. So lesson learned. You know, holiday week last week, we, we should have pulled it from the agenda completely before it hit the agenda tonight. In the future, we should all be thinking that if like the president, vice president doesn't think of that, we wanna pull that and then we have more time cuz we can table it, but we just will have to review it in the next meeting. We can, we can just. I, I think tabling it is fine and then we can, we can see where we get and cross the bridge the next month, honestly. But any other thoughts, discussion? Cuz I do think we wanna give Zach time to get with the team on this. And see where our thoughts are.
You had mentioned you didn't think there was the multi-tiered. Right, so that's in the policy.
Correct.
So that's.
Correct, and that is not a plan that we currently have.
Right. I think that needs to be addressed.
Agreed, so.
But creating an MTSS plan is like a year-long process.
Correct.
So this would be the terminology.
The way that it's kind of used in this particular draft of this policy, though, like you could still have these tiers in line with an MPS. So you could still operate in this way and have like, these are our cutoff points for looking at these students. It just, we don't have our official MPS plan to go back to. So I think we could operate with this. I just wanted you to know that that's another thing that we're gonna have to create and then they have to obviously mesh together.
Okay, so we will, we will table this until the August twelfth meeting. Okay. Moving into eighteen one. Uh, get a motion on approval of regular staffing actions. Let's make the motion and we'll discuss that. Thank you, Dan. Discussion. So there isn't a way, cuz it's not a separate line item to pull that. So your options would be to abstain. Vote yes.
But I would be abstaining from all of them.
Correct. So you can think of it too, if you i- it's your choice. Abstention can sometimes be viewed as a no vote. I would say in cases like this, there's not an immediate conflict. So you're not voting on your own personal interest. So you can vote your conscience there, but you could certainly, I think, vote yes if you wanted to. Any other discussions on the staff? Appointments? Nice to see Andy Ford. I think it was he in here for coaching? Yeah, back for cross-country. I noticed that. Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Alright. Scold up too far. Nineteen, new business general. We have a consent agenda nineteen dash thirteen. Can I get a motion for approval of the consent agenda? Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Ken. Discussion. Any discussion? I know my questions were answered in email. Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Moving into second public comment.
And I'm not, I'm somewhat familiar with Robert's Rules of Order, but cuz this is the start of your new year, anything that wasn't passed by so that policy you were talking about. You have to restart.
It's a good point. Yeah. That would actually be great. It does, and I didn't think of it in terms of the policy because I've always viewed those as three separate actions, but it's one continuous action, so it probably would, yeah. That would be amazing. And that should flow through the policy committee anyway. Okay, push it back. So we'll double check that, but we should be there. That's right. Thank you, Patty. Always appreciate your input. Okay, any other board questions or discussion? Fission, right? Everyone did great. No, I, I would say appreciate all the back and forth on emails over the holiday weekend. I thought that was great. Again, there's definitely no pressure on the superintendent to respond on a holiday, but it was appreciated. Okay, do we have a need for executive session for any reason? Can I get a motion to adjourn? Nope. He's representing.
You know, I got the one of the things I said at graduation, I think senior class I graduated. And I said it that day about coming in in the middle of the year, you know, changing up a whole lot of things in the middle of the year and then responding really well. Even when we caught him on the prank, you know, very respectful. Did their thing, you know, and stuff like that and the whole thing. And then senior class, I think it will be sad.
So I guess quickly, as a parent of a senior, I'd like to thank you for doing such fantastic job with graduation ceremony. It was a great day. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, it was a great ceremony. The speeches were very good.
Cuz I had my own kids' graduations the night before. Outstanding speeches compared to like my home district, you know, with my kids. I have other kids. It was funny when we practiced some at rehearsal, I had the kids practice some, you know. And I said, you guys haven't heard mine, it's like that, but it was amazing that all speeches, I said, you guys, we all have the exact same thing running through all the speeches. And in fact, how they touched up a lot of their, their experience with each other, you know, like it more memorable, just like instead of like a hokey, you know, motivational speech, I thought they were really touching, just shows how close that class really is.
Yeah, and the scissors. The scissors in the outlet. I'll never forget that. Holy cow.
And I do love the selling of lockers. I think that's a great.
That was hilarious. That's good. Awesome, thank you. Alright, can we get a motion to adjourn at six fifty-four? So I, I heard a lot there. We'll go with Dan and Tim. All those in favor? Alright, meeting is adjourned. Have a great night. That's how we do it.